The meeting tonight is for the conduct of town business by the town board. The public is invited to participate at the items marked on the agenda, public comment. During that segment of the meeting, if you have a question or comment for the supervisor, it's reasonable and open to be acknowledged. Please state your full name and room area and watch to three minutes. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you. Tonight, we also have a public hearing on establishment of the Vineyard Hills subdivision, Drainage District, 21 Milton Turnpike, Milton, New York, April 8th, 2024, 7:00 PM, which is right now. We're also going to have our regular monthly meeting right after the public hearing if there's any comments. Before we get that, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And please remain standing for a moment of silence for all the men and women who sacrificed their lives to allow us to serve our country and our town.
Thank you.
Did you sign this?
No.
I think you have to sign, before you leave, you have to sign something from last week. So remind me.
Okay. Okay, so we have a public hearing right now for the Vineyard Hills subdivision Drainage District. If anybody has any comments or would like to put anything into the record, this is the time to do so. Going once, going twice. Okay, so then I would need a motion, as I have no public comments, I need a motion to close the public hearing on the Vineyard Hills subdivision Drainage District.
I'll make the motions to close the public hearing on Milton, 21 Milton Turnpike.
Vineyard Hills. I need a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. Thank you very much. So now, we're going to move on to our monthly town board meeting. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Need a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. Motion to approve the minutes from the March 25th, 2024 town board meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March 25th, 2024 town board meeting.
Need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. Authorize the payment of bills of $143,815.45. Need a motion to pay the bills?
I make a motion to authorize the payment of bills.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. Is there any comments from anybody on the agenda, just the agenda itself? Any comments on the agenda? Kind of a short agenda this week? Yes, sir.
There are motions to establish this particular court hearing.
It'll be, that'll be at the end. We have the resolution at the end for that. No other public comments, reports of department and boards. Does anybody have any comments on the reports of departments? I'm going to read John's. This month, monthly report, March 2024, we spent several days ditching and cutting trees in the intersection of Willa Tree Road and 9W at the baseball fields on New Road. Two days were spent in D. Lorenzo's Tree Care, removing trees at the intersection of Bloom Street and West Street on Bingham Row and Willa Tree Road and on the upper part of Old Indian Road. Our, what is that?
Flail.
Flail over the rail mower was out mowing throughout the month. During the month, we spent several days working at various town-owned sites. At the community center, we had a crew working on the parking lot with KEM excavating. Again, we installed gutter drains into existing catch basins and installed four new catch basins and 300 by 12 feet PVC pipe. Unloaded block purchased for retaining wall, prepared site for poured concrete pad for a soon-to-be-installed flagpole. On 3-6, we picked up and placed a C-Box container in the highway yard, installed shelves and lights that the town court needed for storage. On 3-14, the floating dock on the kayak launch were placed in the river at Milton Train Station for the season. We also assisted Lenny from Scutura Landscaping with installing a new door between the highway garage and the new one from the garage to the outside. This month, we spent, sent men to workshop put on by Cornell Local Roads Program. Three attended Running Your Highway Department in Kingston and six attended roadway and roadside drainage in Carmel. On 3-25, we had a storm that started in rain and ended with a quick freeze. Our trucks went out to assault the town roads. Gas, none, and diesel, none available. We had a problem with the system, so we couldn't get the gallons. And respectfully submitted John Alonji. And I want to read that because, as you can see, our highway department has been very busy in the last couple of months. If you've driven around the town, you've seen a lot of the roads been cleared on the side. A lot of the drainage has been opened up, especially at Young's Park and around that area, at the Clue at Chance Park. And again, they did a lot of work at the community center and continue to do so. That flagpole that they talked about putting the cement in is up, and they are currently placing the blocks around the perimeter, which will be a planting bed and also deters people from hitting the building. So it serves two purposes. And then after that, I believe Councilman Zambito and his crew are going to come in there and start landscaping and get the grass going, and then we're pretty much ready for blacktop after that. So I just wanted to read the highways tonight. Charlie, you want me to read yours tonight? Has anybody got any questions on Charlie's report?
No, but I just want to thank Charlie for coming in on his day off to check the water spigot at Young's on Good Friday. We appreciate it, Charlie.
Yes, he does. Charlie's always coming, come on the weekends, right? No matter what.
Charlie has the best response time of anyone I know.
Yes, he does. Okay. All right, so if no one has any other questions on reports, I'm going to move on to the next And kind of leads me into our presentation, which is zoning change. Darren, you're here, right? If you want to come on up and speak in the mic, state your name and what you're here for. Jerry, do we have the little podium in the back for him? Or we could just place it somewhere where they could see it?
I also have two paper copies.
Okay, great. I got a couple printed out. I got it up here, too. This one, right?
My name is Darren Stridair, and I'm the professional land surveyor. I'm here representing my client on the property that's on 9W, but it also fronts on Grand Street Extension. The property is two and a half acres and currently in the HD zone. It is abutting the R-zone and a residential section of the neighborhood on the end of Grand Street. The client is, thank you.
The property right now is, has a 90-foot elevation difference from Route 9W up towards the upper western portion of the lot. And the client would like to see if we can get what's called a spot zone change right adjacent to the R-zone at the end of Grand Street to continue that residential feel of Grand Street and not have a commercial property at the end. The remaining 2.04 acres of land would be HD zone if this current plan in its form would be approved at the planning board and meets all the zoning requirements for both the HD zone and then the portion that's residential would meet all the requirements for the R-zone.
We're here for guidance from the town board on how this process works and what we need to do to move forward with something like this.
This has been brought here before, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't.
Who is your, who are you representing?
Well, the person that hired me is Paul Conti. He works for Landmark Excavating.
Yep.
But I'm not sure where this has been before.
I'm talking years ago.
Oh, okay.
This is over near African Lane, correct?
This is Grand Street Extension.
Right, but there's a road called African Lane that goes up the hill there.
Oh, I'm not sure about that.
Yep.
Well, basically, let me just update the board a little, too, because I did talk to the code enforcement officer, and my first response to Darren was, you know, we're not rezoning anything along the 9W corridor, we're actually doing the opposite, right? We're trying to keep everything on the corridor in the business zone. But after I looked it over and I started looking at it, is I asked him to come in and give a presentation, and you guys went right to the exact numbers on the acreage. I give you credit on that.
Yeah, I want to make sure it works.
Because it just works. So since this property abuts a residential zone already, this section could be changed to R, is what they're asking, and he will still continue to have 2.4 acres of commercial, which is needed for any commercial property along 9W. So, and you have water and sewer, correct?
Yes.
In that area, so having point, not in the sewer, or it could be in the sewer district? Or can he?
No, it's not, because we had a problem asking. Yep.
So that was my question. So here you have, there's the diagram, right? So with public water and sewer, you have 15 with public water and sewer, so R.
It doesn't touch it.
Yeah, different.
I believe it's 10 for, there's three different designations. There's 10, 7,500, and 15,000.
With public water and sewer, so with public water only.
This is what you have. They don't even have water, do they? I didn't think so.
So you don't have public water and sewer? I thought we were on the assumption you did.
That's not, that's not what it says on the tax information for the lot. So how far away is the water? That's what we need to find out.
That's a good question for Charlie. He'd have to investigate it.
It's not their fault.
Okay.
Are they close enough to get into the sewer on that, Charlie?
Uh, yeah.
But I mean.
But now we're adding to the capacity.
The applicant would have, that's another whole process. Like, if you're not in the water district, if you're not in the sewer district, it's not only just extended, it's a whole legal documentation. So it's like you got to pay for the reserve and you got to pay for back, basically back pay for what the other, the rest of the district had paid for the many, many years of upkeep. So there's a calculation for that, and that's all done by our attorney. So what you would have to do is petition the town board, my office, the supervisor's office, that you want to do that, and then I would get you in touch with our attorneys, and then that's how that would work. Now, again, that's going to be a little costly, obviously, to do that, but if you're abutting the R-zone and you are abutting the water district and sewer district, you can apply for that. Okay? Doesn't mean you, doesn't mean you get it, but you can apply for that.
Sure.
Okay? And only because you're abutting the R-zone and you're abutting those, if you, if those you can get, then yes, you're square foot, because your area is 18,919 square feet, correct?
Yes, we're above.
It's under a half an acre.
Yeah, and so.
Yeah, there are three different designations. We're above, I believe, all three of the.
You need town, water, and sewer, which is less than a half acre.
With public water, so the thing went off here. I have to reconnect.
Yeah, I submitted the zoning.
Yeah, you would be okay if you just had one, because you have to have at least, it's not, no, it's under 15,000.
How far away is the?
Yeah, you only need 10. I've got to reconnect.
It's right in the Grand Street. He's on the extension. I went to this with a contract.
Well, it is allowable. I mean, the thing is, as long as you keep the two acres of the commercial property intact, which you have, then that is okay with the HD zone, all right? So you got to have two acres. And if you stay within what you have, the .4, almost a half acre, and you get into the water district or sewer district, then you should be okay. Again, there's an agreement that you're going to have to obviously apply for and pay for, and then once all that's done, then we would do resolutions to change that section of the zone. Obviously, there's going to be a lot of engineering involved here, right?
That's true.
But after, like, first, my first response was no, because I thought you were trying to change the whole property over to R. And then when I got the map from you and I talked to the code enforcement officer, it is allowable. So if you want to do this, you just have to write a letter to my office and the town board that you're looking to do this again, and then I will refer it to my attorney, and then they will work out the details, and then the board can decide if they want to do it or not.
Okay, that sounds great.
But yeah, it is, it is allowable.
Did anybody go up there and do a search yet?
Not yet. Tommy, look, once he gets the application, once he gets it in, he'll go up. I mean, obviously, they're going to have to get this all engineered, they're going to have to have it staked out, and we're going to have to make sure that what's saying, when it says there's two point something makers, there's actually still two point something makers left, right? So that's the biggie, because we want, we don't want to make the commercial property then not usable, right? Because it has to be two acres.
I made sure, yeah.
And I know, I, I looked at your thing, I said, hey, he was pretty good, he got it exactly.
I want to make sure, I don't want to have egg on my face coming back.
Or an acre and a half if you have water and sewer.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that.
Well, that's true, Manny. If he has water and sewer, it could be a little less, you're right. But, all right, I mean, does the board have any other questions on that? I mean, it's kind of straightforward.
So he has to petition your office?
Mm-hmm.
So you're taking a private driveway off the Grand Street Extension?
Yes.
Going to a one-lawn?
Yeah, it'd be just a driveway, it wouldn't be a road, it would just extend.
So the, so the only thing I have a question about is, I'm looking at the topography of the property, and I know where the property is, I'm familiar with it. What, what's the runoff after they cleared that lot? Do you have any issues with that? Because it leads right down to 9W.
There's an existing drainage ditch, we could probably have some kind of retention before it gets back into that ditch. We have to take a look at that.
Yeah.
See where it goes once, once it comes down the bottom of that hill.
That's right.
Yeah, that's, you know, you're right, Dave. I mean, the drainage in that spot.
Yeah, it's downhill, it's all.
Downhill, so.
Oh, it's really downhill, yeah.
There's 90-foot elevation difference.
So am I, I live near it.
Any other questions?
I'm good.
Great.
I've been through this before.
All right, Darren, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
All right, thank you. So old business is just the tomback update. Again, like I mentioned in the previous report, the highway department now is pretty much taking over the exterior site, and they're doing a lot of exterior work. As you, if people go by, you can see, interior is pretty much done. Couple little things that have to be done in the bathroom, but pretty much, it's pretty much done, and then it's going to have to be cleaned, and then the chairs and all that stuff are coming in, they're trickling in slowly but surely, but all that stuff's starting to come in. But I'm pushing to have this hopefully open by June, and we're going to see if that happens. So if everything holds well and we could get the exterior work complete, I think June is realistic. At the same time, we're now going to roll over right into our next project. This is on the agenda tonight, that we're going to put out the bid, the highway department renovation and water department renovation building. We've been working with GPI for almost a year and a half on this project, and it's finally going to happen this, next week, on the 12th, bids will be ready, and it'll be in the paper this week, and that'll, that's in our agenda to move forward. At the same time, you're also after, it's actually a year, Sheridan, that we applied for a grant with the county for lighting on our baseball fields, and it just came true, through, and the contract is for, ready for me to sign, so I just need the board's permission tonight to sign that contract. And that contract was for $100,000 grant that legislator Corcoran pushed for us to get at the county level, and we thank them and we thank him for giving us that opportunity. So that's another project that's on our radar. The Milton Landing is also about 50% complete from the project start date. All the curb sides are done, the drainage work is done, they're going to start doing the sidewalks, they're going to put the binder down, and then the next step would be blacktop. I had a site meeting, two of them in the last week, which I made it known that I didn't want this project done by the end of the month. The only thing that can hold that up is CSX, and I am waiting back from, a call back from them to set up a site review meeting so that the contractor could put the curb on. It's the eastern side of our parking lot, but the western side of their tracks. And the reason we need their permission is because it's 50 feet from their track center. And if we're working 50 feet from the track center, we have to have CSX engineers sign off on it. Everything else we've done so far has been outside that 50-foot right away, so that's where we're at. But if we could get their permission by the end of this month, that phase of the project will be complete as well.
I have a question.
Yes.
On the lights in that grant.
Yes.
Is that a matching grant? Because we didn't mention that.
Part of it's matching, but most of it's all in, it's all in-kind for the most part, or monies if we choose to use.
But there is going to be some money taken out.
Mm-hmm.
I just want to make that upfront.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's going to be right in the grant when I read it. Or I'll go through the grant. But yes, there's a part of it's a matching grant, and it's in-kind by our highway department that are doing a lot of work for it, and then there's our parks, fun balance that we'll be using for the other part of the grant. Again, we got to see what the numbers come in, right? Nothing's sure until we actually put it out to bid, and when we put it out to bid, then we'll know how much the cost is, so.
Do you have any idea what it's going to be?
We're figuring it's going to be about, right now, the last figure we had was 75,000 a field, somewhere in that range.
Yeah.
But that was, again, about a year ago, so, you know, everything's gone up in a year, so we'll see what happens.
So that would be 50,000 for a tent?
Uh, yeah, probably. Well, again, it depends, if it stays there. And then if that's, if, and also, that's if we do both fields. We don't necessarily have to do both fields, we could just do one field. So that's up to the board, too. But right now, I'm actually constant, since we now have Young's Field, I'm concentrating myself personally, this is what I'm going to recommend to the board, that we concentrate on Young's Field, only because Young's Field is used way more than the Parks Fields. So I'm thinking that once we, if we approve this, for me to sign this, then I'm going to ask GPI to first look at Young's Field for a bid and see how those bids come back, because that'll give us a good indication on what the park field would be.
Scott, before we get into signing anything like this, I'd like to know who's paying the electric bill, who's paying this bill, who's paying that bill?
For what?
For the park there that's existing right now at Young's Park.
It's our park.
Okay.
Who's paying for it?
Well, if it's signed out, if it's signed out to the Little League for the whole time.
The Little League is paying the electric bill.
Right now, they're paying it, and we're going to take it over. Look, the Little League has always paid for the electric when it was private, when it was privately owned. It is publicly owned now.
I was on the board 15 years.
I have asked the Little League to give us the electric bill because it's our park, just like we pay the electric at Clue at Chance when soccer uses it and people rent it out, and we have parades there, we have parties there. Who pays for it? The town of Marlboro, because we own it.
But we get money back for that.
Okay, okay. I'm just telling you, that's, we own the park.
But you rent out the park and make money with it, too.
Okay.
You don't rent, you're not renting out the fold.
You don't rent the park every single time you have a football practice there, every time the soccer league is there, every time the Bachi League is there, you're not renting out the parks to any of those organizations.
You can rent that one to Bachi League, there, it's been rented out one of them.
The pavilion, but you're not renting out the Bachi courts to the Bachi League.
Plus Young's Fields, the Little League has, the Little League has agreed to keep maintaining.
I have a bunch of questions before I move on.
Okay, we'll get to, the Little League is maintaining the fields, they're maintaining the grounds, they're still paying for that, so they're doing a lot of work there that otherwise, as we own the park, we would be paying quite a bit of money for. So it balances out in my eyes. It's a win-win situation for both. This is for kids, right? There's what, 300-plus kids in the league now? So.
It's gone down.
This is for the kids, and I think it was a, a good thing that we got the park, because who knows what could have happened in the future? It could have been sold, and now it's going to be a park and it's going to be in the town of Marlboro's hands for, forever, then it'll be usable.
Scott, I've been involved with Little League for 25 years, I'm not against the Little League and what's going on, but we paid for everything ourselves.
Okay, that was in.
That's all I'm saying.
Okay, that's fine.
I mean, if that was in, when our regime was in there, we would have paid every bill there if we were going to have it exclusively.
And they have.
But we don't have it exclusively.
Well, when can they go?
That's what I asked for several meetings ago, actually. I asked at the beginning of the year if the league could lease the property exclusively, and we were told no, that it has to go on the fee schedule and it has to be available to the public. So the league does not have the property exclusively.
Well, when, when don't you have it? You got it from April on. Anybody's going to use it.
Ed, I, I mean, I asked the question, I'd be happy to have the park exclusively.
Exactly.
I know the board would be.
I have a couple of other questions without.
Wait, hold on, let's get to the, we actually, we are a new business. Go ahead, Ed, you want to?
I just have a couple of questions that have been brought to me by a couple of parents from the Little League. The main question that I've gotten from the people is grandparents, because that's what I am, and they're the grandparents of some of the kids that are in the league. And what they're saying is, now, when we ran a league, and I'm not telling you to run away, we did, only thing that we paid for extra above and beyond the regular Little League season was anybody that was on the Babe Ruth team that played in the tournaments. Any other traveling team, we paid separately, we collected the money separately. Are you doing the same thing?
Yes.
Okay, they don't think so, so I'm just, and that's why I'm asking you.
Yeah, no, that's absolutely, travel, anything, All-Stars even, is paid separately. Everything is paid separately by parents who are involved with those specific programs.
So for instance, a team like, and this is one I, on the Marlboro Marlins, where do they get their funding from?
They have a separate bank account, their parents pay specifically by the season for every team that they're involved with.
Okay. I just think you better, a lot of people don't know.
And I'd be happy, I would be more than happy to share the books with any of the parents.
As long as you're talking, then you'll be on, I'll tell them to watch the show on Wednesday.
Sure, yeah. And I can meet with anybody, Ed, happy to talk to them.
Because I have a, the only. Why are they asking, why, my, my question is, why are they asking a board member of the town board, not the board member of the Marlboro Youth Baseball?
Because they didn't want their name out there, that's why.
Okay. If you're going to ask the question.
I'm asking the question for myself, though, okay?
Okay, okay, well, that's, that's different. But if you're, if you're a parent concerned about Marlboro Youth Baseball, then, a grandparent, then ask the Marlboro Youth Baseball, right? They're the ones that know.
I'm asking the questions for myself.
Yeah, that's fine.
Sure.
And I think if it's on here and people actually hear it on the thing, then I just say, watch it on Wednesday.
Yeah.
Perfect.
And I'm fine with that. And it's, you know, it's the same thing, it, it's, it's a situation like what happened in the basketball situation, where like, a lot of teams were being funded by the kids that are in there all the time, and they don't play on all these other teams. That's what I'm saying. Now, when we played, I started my own All-Star team years ago, but I paid for everything myself. And that's their concern, because their kids aren't getting, I said, if you're not good enough to make the All-Star team, it's not my fault.
It's not an All-Star team.
Well, there is an All-Star team that goes to.
But what you're talking about is the Marlboro Marlins, that's not an All-Star team.
That's one aspect, I'm talking about the regular All-Star team.
That's different. That's Marlboro Youth Baseball.
Yeah, so just, just to clarify, I guess, and make that extremely clear for anybody who may be tuning in separately. All All-Star teams are paid for separately by the parents of the children that play on the All-Star teams. They have a separate fee that they pay at the end of the year, once they've qualified for that team. And all of the travel teams that Marlboro has, which is, I think, up to four teams right now, they all pay separately and have all of their funding tracked separately from the main league. They pay an enrollment fee for every season, so they actually pay typically three to four times a year. Spring, summer, fall, sometimes winter, it depends on the group, but they all pay separately. And that is all tracked through a separate bank account, fully funded by the parents of those children playing on those teams.
Okay. And those books are open to the public?
It's, yeah, I mean, it's a 501(c)(3), and you can examine the documents.
Yeah, they're open to the public. So I'll tell them that. Wanna go look, go look.
Anything else?
I'm just not gonna vote for that.
That's okay.
I know I'm outnumbered.
That's your prerogative, that's what.
I don't think everything's in line right now to vote on something like that, but that's just me. And if, and the other thing is, if you're gonna get a company to come in and do one field now and one field later, you're gonna spend more money, because if they're there to do one field, they'll have all their people there and they'll probably give you a better price on the second field.
We'll see.
Yeah, I mean, happy to explore that. All we're, all we're voting on tonight is to actually accept the contract for the grant from the county, which is the $100,000 grant to be put toward the improvement of our parks. The project that we identified a year on and we all voted on as a board was the lighting. But I think that would be a silly opportunity to turn down if the county's willing to contribute that money.
Which is true, because back when I was on the board, we actually could have got that done for free. Central Hudson wanted the business, and they were gonna put the polls and everything on it.
Well, why didn't you?
They voted against it.
Why didn't you?
I voted for it, they voted against it.
Okay.
If only we could turn back time.
Now you're on the opposite side, you're gonna vote against it, so.
I'm not voting against that.
It's kinda funny, kinda funny how it's turned its whole circle on you, Eddie.
If you're gonna start talking like that.
I can get down and dirty if you want to.
No, I'm just saying, it's kinda funny.
I mean, I didn't do a lot of things, too. I mean, I'm here to just find out information, you're turning it into a service.
No, I'm not, I'm just telling you.
No, you're not. That comment right now is uncalled for.
Okay, I apologize, Eddie. Anybody else have any other new business? Manny, you got anything over there?
I'm good, thank you.
I just wanted to report on the Easter egg dash that was held right before Easter. It was March 30th at the Dome, and everything went very successfully. I think it was probably our smoothest Easter egg event since I've been involved in this. And we actually, we took, we clicked at the door to see how many children actually participated. And there were over 250 children that actually hunted eggs, and then all of their family and relatives were there as well. And we had a great performance by a soundstational DJ that kept the kids busy up until they hunted. I think absolutely our best, most beautiful pictures of the bunny with a handmade backdrop by a new volunteer on the recreation committee. So it went very well, and I think everybody left there very happy.
Yep, it was excellent. And I think you're right, it was probably the most smoothest one we've had ever. So it was, uh.
But that's another thing, the, you know, the highway department pitched in this year as well, in addition to the rec committee, which has grown in numbers tremendously over the last year. But the highway department actually transported all the eggs and supplies up the Thursday before, and they were able to put them in the airlock garage. So it just made setup and move-in quite a bit smoother and easier. So it, you know, it takes a village. I know we always say it takes a village, but there's a lot of people involved, and it really is a good group effort.
It was, and it is great. You guys got a lot of volunteers now, which is good.
It's awesome.
I remember when I went, started it back up 13 years ago, I think we had three people, so. And I think you got like 13, 15 people, so it's, it's good. And a lot of new people, which is nice, so. And, yeah, it was really good.
Actually, we recruited two members just from the meeting that we had, the public hearing a couple of weeks ago, so it was great.
Dave, you got anything tonight?
I'm good.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. You hear that?
I'm not good, I'm here.
Okay, all right. All right, then let me go to correspondence then, all right? I don't got many tonight, I don't think.
That's good, nobody quit.
Nope. Yeah, this is the one, all right. So this is one, this is all I got, no resignations tonight. To the town board, my name is Joe Caroza, I live in Milton, and I coached a 10U travel team, Empire State Huskies, with five existing girls from Milton and Marlboro on our team, along with my coach, Joe Martino from Marlboro. I am asking to please use the town field in Milton at no cost on Monday, Mondays from 5:30 to 7:30, and Saturdays 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. for practice with my team. I spoke to Nick, President of Marlboro Youth Baseball, where I also have been coaching for 20 years. Nick gave me the okay to use the field, but said to ask the town first. I reached out to Danielle to confirm if it was okay. I would greatly appreciate using the fields, we are a fully insured team. And if you need proof of insurance, I can get that for you as well. Thank you very much for your consideration, respectfully, Joe Caroza. Am I saying that right? Till the end of August, this is.
So that's all set? Colleen, it's empty.
What'd you say?
It's in the book, Dave.
Yeah, it's in the book, right, but. So this is Mondays, 5:30 to 7:30. Mondays from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m., and Saturdays 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m.
So all you need is the insurance, right?
Yes, they need insurance applied.
And so I, I would say, I think as long as we get insurance, right?
I'm good.
So we need a motion to allow them to use the fields pending the insurance that the clerk gets. I need a motion for that, to allow them to use the fields.
I'll make that motion.
Need a second?
I'll second it.
One favor. All right, so moved, thanks. Kyle, you'll get ahold of them?
Yes, we'll, we'll.
Yep. All right, here we are, public comments. Anybody got any public comments on any subject you might like?
He's right there.
Come on up. State your name for the clerk.
My name's James Mullin. I'm the rookies director for Marlboro Youth Baseball. I also coach a T-ball team, a rookies team, and a 9U Marlins team. I'm here as a representative of Marlboro Youth Baseball. I was asked to come as a member of our board, just to speak on the opportunity that is being presented to the town and to the kids of our town to be able to play at night under the lights. It's something that we've been paying for, to get the big standlights the past few seasons, in the fall especially, because otherwise, our games have to be done by 6:00, 6:30. It's, uh, we had 150 participants in the fall season, and it's really hard to get weeknight games in without the ability to have lights on the field. We would go to Highland, they have lights on their fields. We would go to other fields that have lights. It's really nice for our kids to be able to play at their home field and get that opportunity. Growing up in Pine Bush, we had lights on our fields, and there was no better game than the games playing on the lights. So as a member of our school board, as a member of our, um, I'm technically living middle hope. But my kids want to be involved in the Marlboro sports. We volunteer with Marlboro Basketball and Marlboro Baseball because this is the community that our children are growing up in. These are their friends, this is where we want them to be. And we really hope you guys move forward with getting the lights or at the field. I know Marlboro Youth Baseball is willing to do what we can to put in to make sure that's a reality. We have a hard-working group of men and women who like, love to maintain that field. They spend more time at that field, some of them, than they spend at home, I think. So you'll see them all week, all times of day, trying to get those fields up and ready. And we just really appreciate the opportunity the town is taking and investing in providing a fun experience for our kids and our kids that are growing. Because as a member of the school board, we went from 750 members, or elementary school kids, to 776 from last year to this year. So we're trending in a growth direction, and we could really use opportunities for our kids to be involved in recreation activities in the town where their friends are and where we want them to be raised. So thank you all for that opportunity, and we hope you vote yes.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other public comments?
Yeah, Scott, speaking in.
In reference to recreation, I got two phone calls today, and pickleball, exactly. That the weather's getting better, and they, they're like, is the June still the target?
We're gonna have a, well, I guess we could have that discussion now. So we just got the estimate, just the blacktop, the pickleball courts, and we'd have to, in order to get the pickleball courts in, we have to kind of reshift where the basketball and everything. What do you think it's gonna cost the blacktop for pickleball courts? Anybody take a guess?
It's gotta be a lot.
No way.
So as of right now, pickleball's on hold for a little bit, until we could figure out a possible solution.
But you said you had, didn't you say you had money in the budget?
We have like $30,000 in the budget to do it, so now.
I thought you said 60.
No, no.
Spend it.
Come on, Scott.
Well, you also gotta remember, that doesn't include fencing, which we have to end, the nets and everything. So I just got an estimate for Charlie's Water Department on fencing for a little small fence is like $12,000. That's an insurance claim, so they're paying for it. But I'm just thinking in my head, what the pickleball court's gonna cost. Probably gonna cost $30,000 for fencing.
You're gonna have some very, very upset citizens.
So we just, we have to, we have to relook at it.
Especially when they say the recreation committee.
Tomorrow, the, next week or tomorrow, I'm having, tomorrow or at the end of the week, I'm gonna be speaking with Chris, and we're gonna go over the budget that we have in our recreational fund. Because number one, for the lighting, and number two, for this pickleball court, right? So if we have a certain amount of money in our fund balance to do so, I will present it to the board, the full numbers. And then if you guys decide you wanna move forward on it, then we'll move forward on it. But right now, we're collecting numbers. And by the way, that $54,000 number is a state bid price, so it's not like it's.
It's gonna go down.
It's not gonna go down, that's the state bid minimum. So I was shocked.
Scott, is there an alternate location we should consider for a pickleball court? So it would, you maybe compress the amount of blacktopping you'd have to do?
We're, that's what we're trying to think if we can. Because at Clue at Chance.
You know, I really wanted an ice skating rink next to the new community center, but maybe it's a pickleball court.
I mean, it could be.
You'd have to have a fence that means basketball.
Well, yeah, I mean, we're blacktopping there anyway, but it'd be right on 9W, kinda like.
If there's nice parking there, at least.
There is a lot of good parking.
Oh, Scott, man.
Yeah, we gotta figure it out. But at the Clue at Chance Park, I could tell you that we, we look kinda like a lot of spots, it's kinda like.
Stuff there.
Can you send me?
There's nothing real level, unless we took away the soccer field, and we don't wanna do that, so.
Can I be involved with that? Can you send me an invite?
Yep.
I'd like to be.
Look, the highway department's done a lot of preliminary work on this. I mean, they, uh, they went and visited other pickleball courts. They measured other courts, they looked up the material, they looked at, you know, what the fencing's gonna be. They stake, it's all staked out up there. If you go up there, you could see it's actually staked out and ready to go. If the board said go, they'd probably do it next month. But we could put blacktop down, but then we'd have, I don't know, we have no fence.
And you gotta have it lined and everything.
And we have to have it lined.
That's.
And you remember how expensive it was to do the courts when we did basketball, to paint them, so. So that, look, I'm more disappointed than you could imagine right now, Manny, but we're gonna, we're, we're working on it. Unless there's a, some donor out there that wants to donate a whole bunch of.
Manny, how key.
We can do that, so. I'm always open for that suggestion, but look, we're gonna, I'm gonna get you some more information as it comes in, but that was the first thing I got this week.
And we gotta get a total of everything.
And I was kinda like taken back by the numbers, so I told them to hold off until the board can digest what we're gonna do. And they're gonna look at alternatives if there's a possible. I mean, that was four pickleball courts. I mean, the alternative is we do two pickleball courts. But the thing is, if you do two, then later you're gonna kick yourself that you didn't do the four. And I talked to, I talked to a couple of my supervisors that have pickleball courts, and they said they are nonstop used. So Rosendale actually has an indoor in the gym, like, kinda like this. They have an actual indoor one, and it's used like all day, all night. It's like, yeah, it's crazy.
Yeah, they charge like, like 40, 30 or 40,000 dollars.
Floor performance in New Windsor, because, I don't know if they're a state, but they do flooring. That's all they do is performance flooring, so they may be able to come in with something that would be an experience.
I asked a couple of other supervisors, and actually asked a couple of other people done. They said most of their guys are telling them for pickleball courts, it's 250 grand. By the time you're done with, with the prevailing wage, the blacktop, the fencing, the painting, but our highway guys are gonna do a lot of the work, so that's how we can save money. But I don't know how much, you know, I mean, we might be able to get down to 100,000. It might end up costing $100,000 to put this in. So the thing is, is the board willing to do that? That's up to the board. And do we have enough funds in our fund balance to do so, and do we wanna use all of them for one thing? It's, you know, something we just gotta think about. So as of right now, the brakes are on, but they're not off. I mean, we're slowing down.
The gas is near.
I'm sending to you.
I know, I know.
You told me.
I thought we weren't ready to go. I have money in the budget, but just not enough money, I guess. The good thing is, there's other monies that come available next year if we had to push it off a year, so. It's always, it's always something that you try to do as much as you can in one year, and sometimes you can't do everything in one year. So, you know, if we can't get it in this year, then we will look at how we fund it in the next budget, that's all. I mean, that money line item's not going away. There's other line items that come free that we could add to, right? So that would figure out some more money, but. So I'm sorry to be the bearer of bad news right now, Manny.
I'd like to go over the numbers with you, for sure.
All right. Anybody else, anybody else got anything else? All right, then we're gonna go to resolutions. And we got resolution number 40. To authorize Greenman Peterson to publicly bid the Marlboro DPW Garage renovation. It's number TM-2024DPWR. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following, whereas the town of Marlboro is requesting bids for construction of the project known as the Marlboro DPW Garage renovation, TM2024DPWR. And whereas a scope of work has been prepared by Greenman Peterson, Inc., 80 Wolf Road, Suite 30, Albany, New York 12205. And whereas the town of Marlboro Town Board authorizes Greenman Peterson, Inc. to publicly bid the Marlboro DPW Garage renovation, TM-2024DPWR. And whereas the bidding documents may be obtained electronically from BidNet Direct at, and that's their website, bidnetdirect.com/newyork, town of Marlboro, New York. And whereas hard copies may be obtained at the town clerk's office, office located 21 Milton Turpik, Suite 200, Milton, New York 12547. Now for, therefore it be resolved that the bids will be received and opened by the town clerk and read aloud at Town Hall 21 Milton Turpik, Suite 200, Milton, New York 12547 on May 15th, 2024 at 11:30 a.m. local time for the following contracts. General construction, number one, number two, electrical, number three, plumbing, and number four, HVAC. And moves for its adoption.
Councilwoman Melonelli.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sessa.
Yes.
Councilwoman Halking.
Yes.
Councilwoman Zanbido.
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran.
Yes, thank you. Resolution 41, to authorize supervisor to sign an intermunicipal agreement with the county to fund improvements to Young's Park and Clue at Chance Park. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following, whereas the Ulster County Legislature passed Resolution Number 289, amend the funding capital project number 635, the amount of $2 million to create programs to partner with the county municipalities and match up to 50% of park and recreation projects with the maximum contribution of $100,000 for municipalities. So there you go, 50%, right?
That's what I figured.
Whereas the town of Marlboro and Ulster County desire to enter into an intermunicipal agreement, whereas the town will be subrecip, subrecipient of $100,000 of the American Red Chloros Plan at Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. And whereas the town will be responsible, other, under the MIMA, for administering a program to improve baseball fields and lighting at the town parks in the, in the town. And now therefore it be resolved, the town board of the town of Marlboro hereby authorize the supervisor to sign an intermunicipal agreement with the county to partially fund improvements to Young's Field and Clue at Chance Park, and moves for its adoption.
Councilwoman Melonelli.
Uh, yes, thank you for the answers, Councilwoman Sherwood.
Councilwoman Sessa.
Yes.
Councilwoman Halking.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Zambito.
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran.
Yes, thank you, everyone. Resolution 42, "To reintroduce local law number," and we'll get that when we finalize it, "of the year 2024 of the local law of the town of Marlboro, Ulster County, New York, amend in chapter 155 zoning article IX, section 155-41.1 of the Marlboro Town Code entitled Ridge Line Sleep Slope Protection. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following, whereas on or about December 11th, 2023, the town board of the town of Marlboro introduced a proposed local law of the town of Marlboro, proposing to amend section 155-41.1 Ridge Line and Steep Slope Protection, the proposed local law amendment, and whereas on about December 12th, 2023, the proposed local law amendment was referred to the Ulster County Planning Board, and whereas on or about January 3rd, 2024, the Ulster County Planning Board submitted comments to the town board on the proposed local law amendment, and whereas the town board of the town of Marlboro referred the proposed local law amendment to the town of Marlboro Planning Board in accordance with Town Code, section 155-49, and received comments dated January 8th, 2024. And whereas on February 12th, 2024, the proposed local law amendment was reintroduced at a public hearing, thereon was held on February 26th, 2024, and whereas substantial changes have been proposed to the proposed local law amendment, and whereas consequently the town board of the town of Marlboro reintroduces proposed amendment to section 155-41.1 of the Town of Marlboro Code as set forth hereon. Being enacted by the town board of the town of Marlboro, the Town Code is amended as follows. Section 1, section 155-41.1 F4 of the Marlboro Town Court is amended to read as follows, deletions are stricken and additions are underscored. Number four, applicants for construction on projects to which this section applies shall demonstrate to the town engineer and the town code enforcement officer that no proposed building or structure, inclusive of chimneys, vents, or fixtures attached to the structure that is subject to this section, shall extend above the highest elevation of the Marlboro ridgeline as viewed from the east as determined by the town engineer and the town code enforcement officer. Section A, if the town engineer opinions such requirements would render the existing lot unbuildable, the town engineer may recommend issuance of, and the building department may issue, a construction permit for the existing lot of record which does not meet the requirements of this section upon his determination that no suitable conforming location is available. And B, there shall be no disturbance of the tree line area above the highest point of the structure and the highest point of the ridgeline. C, applicants are required to provide the building department with a topographic survey of the lot showing topography within 200 feet of the proposed building area and shown elevations with two feet intervals, topography shall be used NAVD-88. D, structures shall not use or contain bright or fluorescent colored materials or highly reflective shiny metal or similar materials, all structures shall be of natural coloring that blends in with the ridgeline natural color scheme, use of colors such as brown, black, gray, beige, green are preferred. E, lighting shall not be excessive, bright LED lighting shall not be used, only fully shielded natural lighting and fixtures must be used, lighting shall be dark, sky compliant. F, definitions, one, ridgeline is defined as the highest elevation of land running north to south across the Marlboro Ridgeline Protection Map. Two, tree line is defined as the edge of the habitat which trees and vegetation are capable of growing above the ridgeline. Three, NAVD-88 is defined as the North American Vertical Datum of 1988. Section three, if any of the sections of this local law shall be held unconstitutional, invalid, or ineffective, the whole or part such determination should not be deemed to affect, impair, or invalidate the remainder of this law. Section four, pursuant to section 22 of the state municipal home rule law, the local law shall modify and supersede any provisions of state statute which is inconsistent with the terms of the local law. Section five, the local law shall be effective upon filing with the Secretary of State, whereas the town board has determined that the action to amend the town of Marlboro Zone Law is a type one action under New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRA, whereas that because only the town board can con...